2014 City Council Meeting for the City of Dover. The invocation will be given by the Reverend Theodore Henderson, and if you will join me with the Pledge of Allegiance immediately afterwards.
Before I have your invocation, let us have a few moments of silence for those who lost their lives in the Dover community. Dear God, our hearts go out to those who've lost their lives, and we pray, dear God, for justice and for cure. We pray that you continue to be with our police department. And we pray, dear God, even more fervently for our police department, because we're all aware of the tragedy that went down in Ferguson, Missouri. And we know that communication is vital, that we must continue to talk with one another, that we must continue, dear God, to include all of our citizens in this beautiful system we call America, where justice is supposed to be for all. We pray that you'll continue to guide our mayor, to guide all of our elected officials, to let them know their instruments of the government would guide us and the people who they serve, enable them to discharge their duties in such a manner to give credit to you, as well as to our nation and to our community. And reward all of our labors, dear God, with inner peace and inner joy, and a solid community in all we do. We pray this in your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Counselor, you have before you this evening's agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda, Mr. Slavin?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Mr. Council President, based on the conversations and discussions we had in executive session, I ask that item number nine, tentative labor contract, would you ask me be deferred until September the 8th, 2014, for the purposes of receiving some more financial analysis for council?
My second motion.
Thank you, Mr. Slavin. Thank you, Mr. Hutcherson. The motion is to amend the agenda by deleting item number none. Now entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
To move.
Second.
By Mr. Hutcherson, second by Mrs. Williams. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, I would disqualify myself from the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. We appreciate that. We understand your disqualification. Now I have before you the consent agenda. Those items on the council agenda which are considered routine and uncontroversial are marked with an asterisk, and will be acted upon by a single roll call vote of council. There will be no separate discussion of the items unless a member so requests, and which then matters shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. What's the pleasure of council?
Move the approval of consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon, second. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Persa?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hutcherson?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, motion carries, seven to one. Item number two on the agenda this evening is a presentation by Kent County Levy Court, Commissioner Brad Evey, and Alan Angel for reciprocal borrowing fund special allocation. I would invite Mayor Christensen, Commissioners Evey and Angel, and Becky Norton, the Assistant Library Director, to the podium for the presentation.
Mr. President, if you please counsel, may I have Councilman Dixon also join us?
Yes, by all means, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Dixon, will you join them at the podium? Mr. Evey?
Good evening. Thank you for a few moments here. Pleasure to be here tonight with City Council, our friends here at the City of Dover. We at the county, Kent County Levy Court, have a great tradition of working with the City of Dover on a variety of issues to solve the needs and problems of our constituents. And we're happy tonight to be here to present a check to the City of Dover for the what's called a reciprocal borrowing, which is a residual library tax. And every year, the county collects a certain amount of tax and then distributes it among an agreement with the libraries. And every once in a while, there's some remaining funds that we then distribute. And so, Mr. Angel, myself, Commissioner Evey are here to make that presentation. And we have a check tonight to the City of Dover for their library for $40,000, and we're happy to present that on behalf of Kent County Levy Court.
Mr. Angel.
I just want to say that Mr. Evey has two-thirds of the city. I have a third of the city. And Terry Pepper, who's the Commissioner-at-Large, is running for reelection and could not make it tonight, but he has all the city also.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Becky, would you like to make some remarks?
Just quickly, I just want to say thank you very, very much, and I promise you'll put this to very good use.
And we accept it gracefully and graciously from the county.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. As always, it's good to see members of our county commission at our meetings. You're welcome anytime. Item number three is a presentation for recognition of service for Gary Patterson from the downtown Dover Partnership from May 1989 to July 2014. I would invite Mr. Patterson to come down to the podium to join Mayor Christensen and myself.
Mr. Patterson, many years ago, when I first was elected to City Council, and I won't say how long ago that was, there was a saying on the council and from the mayors and the members of council that if there was any hard task to do, let Gary do it. I didn't realize who Gary was until I had seen him come to the many, many meetings at City Hall and the many committees throughout the city that Mr. Patterson has served on. This small token of our appreciation does not cover all the appreciation of Dover and her citizens over the years that you have served, the greater Dover community. So, thank you very much. Mr. President, would you like to present that?
Thank you. Gary, on behalf of members of the partnership and the City Council for the City of Dover, would like to give you a small token of our appreciation. We appreciate everything that you've done. You know, over the years, you and I have not only been business friends, we've also been personal friends. And I've watched as you've given example to residents of the City of Dover, what it means, about what it means to engage in community activities and participate. And from a personal standpoint, I want to thank you for encouraging me to get involved. Because, as you well know, I was hesitant at first. I did. And I'm very happy that I have it in the long run. We're going to miss your active participation, but you can be guaranteed that we'll be asking you to step forward again in the near future. For those of you who don't realize this, Gary has a family that he has encouraged to become active in the community as well. His son Gregory is an example of community involvement, just like Gary has been. And we thank you and Betsy and the entire family.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I thank you, members of council. I actually started my service with the Library Commission when Terry Jackson, who used to be a good friend, said, "I'm real busy with my law practice, and could you step in?" And of course, I said yes to that and quickly became president. So, it's really maybe 38 years that I've been going to monthly meetings on behalf of the city and have worked with every city manager, I guess, since Bill James, every mayor since Crawford Carroll, twice, and lots of really cool, interesting, and warm friends who have been on council. They have been numerous, but everyone I consider a friend, a colleague, and have been happy to work with. It's a great city. It keeps getting better every year. I thought it was a big deal when we put an addition on the library. That took two tries and a referendum, a failed one and then a success one. I thought that was a big deal, and now what we've accomplished downtown on North Street, you know, beats that by a mile. So, good things happening. I tell folks who are sometimes critics of what you do, what we do, you have to look at Dover in five and 10-year slices. You know, you can't look at yesterday, but you look back five, you look 10 years, and then you project what you're going to do five and 10 years ahead. And this is a great city. It's just going to keep getting better. Thank you very much.
Item number four on the agenda this evening is a proclamation for national preparedness month. I would invite Kay Sass, City of Dover Emergency Management Coordinator, to join Mayor Christensen at the podium, and ask the city clerk to read the proclamation into the record. And Mayor Hutcherson, if you would join them. Appreciate it.
Whereas, national preparedness month creates an important opportunity for City of Dover residents to prepare their homes, businesses, and communities for potential natural disasters or terrorist attacks. And whereas, investing in emergency preparedness can reduce injuries, fatalities, and economic devastation in our community and nation. And whereas, the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Ready Campaign, Citizens Corps, and other federal, state, local, private, and volunteer agencies are working to increase public activities to prepare for emergencies and to educate individuals on how to take action. And whereas, the Ready Campaign established four universal building blocks of emergency preparedness. Be informed, make a plan, build a kit, and get involved. With the 2014 National Preparedness Month theme being be disaster aware, take action to prepare. And whereas, emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every citizen of the City of Dover, and all citizens are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together as a team to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type, and are encouraged to participate in preparedness activities and to be proactive in establishing sound plans for addressing emergency. Now therefore, I, Robin R. Christensen, Mayor of the City of Dover, Delaware, hereby proclaim the month of September 2014 as National Preparedness Month in the City of Dover, and encourage all citizens, businesses, and organizations to develop their own emergency plan and work together toward creating a more prepared society.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we present you with the certificate recognizing National Preparedness Month, I'd like to make a comment about Ms. Sass. She has many, many hats that she wears in the city, as we are all aware of, and she just recently acquired a new one. She is the Master Exercise Practitioner Program through FEMA. In addition to all the other hats that she wears for the city, she will now have an MEP hat, a Master Exercise Practitioner. And I think that probably that coat rack in my room will get some of her excess hats. Ms. Sass, on behalf of the mayor of council and all that you do, thank you very much on behalf of our citizens.
Certainly in honor, in behalf of the city and for our council, and certainly, Mr. Mayor. When I look at this city, one of the things I stand very proud of, when I look at our emergency response team, I can assure you that the city is well-prepared, well-trained to meet any kinds of needs into the future. Okay? A lot goes to you for the leadership commitment, and I thank you for that, and good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, before you sit down, there's a member of this body that was somewhat affectionately known as Three Hats for having about three or four different hats on at the same time. I think we can call you Seven Hats now. Not to be compared with Seven Stacks, although you might think that that might be the case. Thank you very much. We appreciate all you've done, Kate. Item number five on the agenda this evening is a public hearing for a violation of dangerous building ordinance, dangerous structure of property located 231 Mifflin Road, owned by Jesse and Nicole Evans Pool, Cory Pool. Ms. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. President. Both of the dangerous buildings you have before you this evening are pools. The houses with which the pools are associated are vacant, but they are not in the state of disrepair, so we're looking specifically at pools. So, again, this is property located at 231 Mifflin Road. The owner of record is Jesse and Nicole Evans. The property is abandoned. The home was registered as vacant on October 20th, 2011. We've started monitoring the property regularly to make sure that everything's okay, and we determined that the fence on the property had deteriorated and is no longer able to serve as a safety barrier. It was recently repaired, just probably last week. The fence was repaired, but the pool itself is not. This property has been a source of regular neighbor complaints going back to 2011. It was placarded as an unsafe structure on June 6th, 2014. Notice was sent to all lien holders to make the repairs, to bring the pool into a safe condition. The notices sent to the property owners have been returned, unclaimed. Again, we're bringing it forward as it's a danger to general welfare, and there are numerous code violations. This is the house from the front, with our inspection vehicle in the driveway. And this is the fence. You can see that the fence has been repaired and locked. You can see the pool, slight overgrowth surrounding the pool. And here you can see where the liner has really kind of fallen in. Leaves accumulated and stagnant water. So, again, in this case, we are asking the council to declare the in-ground pool and any pool pump assembly on the property dangerous, to order the property to be repaired or demolished by September 25th, 2014. If the owner does not demolish or repair within that timeframe, that staff would proceed within, after 10 days of the date established by council, and then proceed as stated to recover the costs. Would that I take any questions?
Mrs. Williams and Mr. Persa.
Hi, Mrs. Townsend.
Hello.
You have, you've sent the notices out, and they haven't been, they've been returned?
Yes, we've sent them certified and regular mail, and they're being returned.
Does that mean the boners are no longer at that residence?
We are sending them to the address that we have on record, and that is 231 Mifflin Road. So, yes, they're no longer at the residence. Again, the building's been vacant since 2011, but we do not have another address for the property owner.
Have you been inside the building?
We have not been inside the building at this point. We're just looking at the pool.
If the, if the pool has been left in this condition and the building has been vacant, is there, is there any means that you can get in, can you get into the building to find out if there's significant problems in the building?
As long as the building remains secure, we can't get into it without a warrant. If it's unsecured, then we would go in to check to make sure there aren't people in before we board it. But short of that, we would need a warrant.
Okay, and then, so all the city's going to do is take out the pool and/or fill it?
We would take out the liner and backfill.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Persa.
What are the nature of complaints from neighbors? Is it that kids are getting into the pool and using it, or is it that it's unsecure and it's possible that kids could fall into it?
I think, I don't believe there's been an issue with people getting in. I think the issue has been more with, you know, stagnant water and mosquitoes, and it's unsightly, it doesn't smell good, and it does, you know, people...
So, it's the condition of the pool, not necessarily the security? Where I'm going with this...
It's both.
Within my world, I really don't want to spend $7,500 filling in a swimming pool if I can put a fence around it for 500 to keep people out.
Right.
So, the actual safety condition is that it's the aroma, the mosquitoes...
It's all of those things.
And that's what's creating the safety issue then?
Yes.
Okay.
When we, we did actually look at it a little more closely just last week and talked to the deputy solicitor about, you know, how far do we need to go to repair it? And we think, based on the fact that we can remove the liner, and we don't have to necessarily remove any of the concrete surround, remove the liner, remove the coping on the edge of the pool, and just backfill, it's probably, probably cuts that in about half.
Mr. Lynn.
Do we have, I just looked it up on Pride, and it appears that the property was fairly recently acquired. They just bought it in '07. Do we know, or have any reason to believe that this is in the subject of a foreclosure action?
We don't have a bank contact. It's possible, but some banks have been very good about working with us, others don't. So, we did the lien search, and there is a lien with Bank of America, with BAC Field Services Corporation. They're all Bank of America liens, so I think it could be assumed, but not known for certain.
Though we weren't able to get a registered mail through to them, were we able to post the property at all?
Yes, yes. We always post the property. And again, we notify the lien holders as well. In this case, I think some of the, some of those came back, having been signed for.
Thank you, Lynn. Any further questions of staff?
City staff recommendation is to fill it and get rid of it, rather than put up the Berlin Wall around it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Persa. Any further questions?
I'd like to make, to make a motion...
We have to have a public hearing on this.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
We will now have a public hearing. I declare the public hearing open on this issue. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of declaring this property dangerous? Anyone who would like to speak in favor of declaring the property dangerous? If so, come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak against declaring the property dangerous? Come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Pleasure of council. Mrs. Williams.
I would now like, with the proper public hearing, to make a motion to approve the staff recommendation to have the pool declared dangerous and insecure, and to have, and to do whatever remediation has to be done.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Anderson. Any questions on the motion? The motion is to declare the in-ground pool and pool pump assembly on the property dangerous, ordering the property repaired or demolished by September 25th by the owner or equity owner at their own risk, ordering the building inspector to cause a repair, demolition of the structures if not completed by the owner within dead-end days, established by City Council, ordering the city manager with the assistance of the solicitor to cause the cost of repairs for, or demolition to be charged against the land on which the structure exists as a municipal lien, or cause such cost to be added to the tax duplicate as an assessment, or to be levied as a special tax, or to be recovered in a suit at law against the owner. Any other questions on the motion? I don't think I can call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Persa?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hutcherson?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Item number 5B on the agenda this evening regarding a property located at 803 Westview Terrace, owned by William R. Maston, another swing. Mrs. Townsend.
All right. Good evening again. As I said, this is another pool. Again, this one is, the property owner is William R. Maston. Okay, this is a property at 803 Westview Terrace. The house is vacant. The home was registered as vacant on March 13th, 2013. There have been 10 code violation cases since that time. Tallgrass and weeds, closing a vacant structure. We've had a number of resident complaints about this. The fence around the perimeter of the property has deteriorated. The pool was placarded as unsafe on June 6th, 2014. Notice has been sent to the lien holders. Again, we're bringing it forward as it's a threat to general welfare, and there are numerous code violations. It's a picture of the house, yard. There's some type of interesting cover on the pool, as you can see, surrounded by concrete. And this is the one, actually, that engendered the discussion with Mr. Pepper about could we just backfill the area, or do we need to remove all the concrete? You can see as you get into there that the liner is falling in on itself. And there's your concrete surround. So, again, in this case, our recommendation is to declare the in-ground pool dangerous, to order the property to be repaired or demolished by September 25th. If not done within 10 days of that date, that staff would move forward with the demolition and proceed as stated to recover costs. Just to note the issue of the status of the property, since it was brought up on the last one, we have two mailing addresses for the property owner. So, one is the Westview Terrace address. The other is in Pennsylvania. We did not, we did get the letter returned, and, but we also have a Bank of America address, so it went to the lien holder as well, and in that case, it was signed for.
Thank you, Mrs. Townsend. Any questions? Mr. Persa, then Mr. Williams, or Mrs. Williams, then Mr. Lynn.
Is there water in the pool?
There was not at the most recent inspections.
If there's not water in the pools, that mean there's not the odor and mosquito type of problems that we had on the other pool?
Probably not at this point in time, but...
So, that means this is a security issue, and can it, can it be addressed with the fence being secured, rather than spending $8,000 on a pool?
It depends on, let me see if we can see it on here. Depends on the height of the pool. Yes, motion carries unanimously. Item number 5B on the agenda this evening, regarding a property located at 803 Westview Terrace owned by William R. Maston, another swimmer. Mrs. Townsend.
All right, good evening again. As I said, this is another pool. Again, this one is, the property owner is William R. Maston. Okay, this is a property at 803 Westview Terrace. The, the house is vacant, the home was registered as vacant on March 13th, 2013. There have been 10 code violation cases since that time, tall grass and weeds, closing a vacant structure, that we've had a number of resident complaints about this. The fence around the perimeter of the property has deteriorated. The pool was placarded as unsafe on June 6th, 2014, notice has been sent to the lien holders. Again, we're bringing it forward as it's a threat to general welfare and there are numerous code violations. It's a picture of the house, yard. There's some type of interesting cover on the pool, as you can see. Surrounded by concrete, and this is the one actually that engendered the discussion with Mr. Pepper about could we just backfill the area or do we need to remove all the concrete? You can see as you get into there that the, the liner is falling in on itself. And, there's your concrete surround. So again, in this case, our recommendation is to declare the in-ground pool dangerous, to order the property to be repaired or demolished by September 25th. If not done within 10 days of that date, that staff would move forward with the demolition and proceed as stated to recover costs. Just to note the issue of the status of the property, since it was brought up on the last one, we have two mailing addresses for the property owner, so one is the Westview Terrace address, the other is in Pennsylvania. We did not, we did get the, the letter returned and, but we also have a Bank of America address, so, so it went to the lien holder as well, and in that case, it was signed for.
Thank you, Mrs. Townsend. Any questions, Mr. Persa, then Mr. Williams, or Mrs. Williams, then Mr. Lynn?
Is there water in the pool?
There was not at the most recent inspections.
If there's not water in the pools, that mean there's not the odor and mosquito type of problems that we had on the other pool?
Probably not at this point in time, but-
Well, so that means this is a security issue and that-
Yes.
Can it be addressed with the fence being secured rather than spending $8,000 on a pool?
It depends on, let me see if we can see it on here, it depends on the height of the fence, if it's a, a low chain link fence and wouldn't meet current standards, it looks like it's a-
Even if you just fenced in the pool?
It's likely that a fence would cost more than, than the, the removal of the liner and filling it up.
Fence the pool costs more than the actual pool?
I would think so.
Yeah.
It doesn't look, it looks like there's a chain link fence toward the front of the property there. On the side, there's a, you've got stockade fence, so it looks like a variety of fencing around the pool, or around the yard.
Does the city have an estimate of what it would cost to repair the fence? To secure the site?
Well, we could repair, the problem is the, the chain link fence appears to be 42-inch tall fence and under the, the safety code, the International Property Maintenance Code and the Building Code, the fence around a pool is supposed to be four feet in height with a latching mechanism that is 54 inches from the ground.
Is that what the code was when the pool was put in?
No.
What was the code when the pool was put in?
Probably what you had.
42 inches, so it's not in violation then?
Right.
Okay.
But in this case, again, with a vacant property that's not being attended to, if somebody did get in and you've got whatever this-
They're not going swimming.
Whatever this netting is that's going on over the pool-
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
Mrs. White.
That was my question, Mrs. Townsend, is the, is the netting possibly an attempt on the part of the owner to secure the safety of the pool so no one falls in?
I think it may have been at one point in time, yes.
So, or for animals, yeah. So the, the owner is showing some responsibility?
Well, they may have, again, I'm not sure how, how far this goes back, the, the house has been vacant since the early part of 2013, I'm not sure how long it's been secured this way.
Okay.
But yes, there's some-
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Lynn?
Ms. Townsend, this is the house on the corner of Dover Street and, and what, and Westview Terrace, right?
Yeah, near the, yes.
By the park?
Yes.
Okay. I, I had the occasion to actually speak with some of the neighbors this weekend who relayed to me that this house is vacant, there's nobody there, nor has anyone been there in quite a while.
Right.
And that the liner went into the pool with the summer storms, the hurricane-
Okay.
Is what they recounted, and that it's been in this condition for some time, basically the entirety of the summer. And some of the concerns that Mr. Persa raised, the odor, the mosquitoes were concerns that some of the neighbors raised, is it wasn't just, they're worried about their children going into the pool as an attractive nuisance, but also the aroma, the mosquito, these types of things.
But I would also point out that the location on an intersection across from the park, it, it could end up being an attractive nuisance if it's easy to get into the yard, you know?
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions of staff? This two requires a public hearing. Declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of declaring this property dangerous? If so, come forward, state your name and address for the record. Anyone who would like to speak in favor of declaring this property dangerous? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak against declaring the property dangerous? If so, come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed. Pleasure of council. Mr. Slaven?
Move the acceptance of staff recommendation.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Slaven, second by Mr. Lynn. Any questions on the motion? Adam Clark, call the board.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Persa?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yeah.
Mr. Brownell?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Item number 10 on the, item number 10 on the agenda this evening is the evaluation of bids for White Oak Farms Basin Number 5 Influen, Inflow, and Infiltration Replacement. Mr. Koenig.
Thank you, Council President Bonar. In the packet tonight is an action form out of the Department of Public Works regarding White Oak Farms Basin Number 5 INI issues. We have been evaluating various parts of the sanitary sewer system and in fiscal year 14, Buck Drive was identified as a source of INI into the sanitary sewer system in Basin Number 5. The project proposes to replace approximately 1,300 linear feet of sewer main as well as six manholes which must be removed, replaced. Bids were advertised through the city's procurement, contract and procurement manager and were opened on August 6th of this year. Two contractors submitted bids, one from Rybelle Construction Group out of Bear, the second from Teal Construction Incorporated out of Dover. Staff has reviewed the bids and found that the bid, the low bid from Teal Construction Incorporated in the amount of $378,378 to be the low bid and qualified, as well as free of math and other discrepancies in the bid. Based on staff's review of the proposals or the bids, staff is recommending the award of a unit price contract for project number 14-0049PW for the White Oak Farms Pump Station Basin Number 5 INI replacement project to Teal Construction in the amount of $378,378. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Seeing none, much pleasure of council. Adam White, give him a second.
Just anything you want. I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lynn. Any questions on the motion? Adam Clark, call the board.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Persa?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mr. Brownell?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Item number 11 is the acceptance of the proposal for HVAC control systems for the Dover Library. Again, Mr. Koenig.
Thank you. The staff from the Department of Public Works as well as the library has been working to get the library systems up and running as they were originally designed. We have been having some difficulties with the HVAC system and performance within the parameters designed, and we have identified that there's a maintenance contract that needs to go into place to provide updated software as well as some operational issues associated with the control system. Staff requested a proposal from Johnson Controls, which is the vendor that designed and initiated the software system at the new library. This is essentially a sole-source contract because of, of the control system that is inside of the building. It is important that the control system be operating within the design parameters so that the remainder of the system can provide the level of service that we anticipated at the library. We are currently experiencing problems in the, in the heating mode in the summertime as well as some of the, I'm sorry, the cooling mode in the summertime as well as the heating mode in, in the wintertime. This proposed contract will address the control issues. It is a three-year proposal with the first year being $17,640, next fiscal year will be $7450, and the third fiscal year will be $7,673.50. This is currently an unbudgeted item, we will be moving money from various funds and divisional budgets to cover the expense, but we feel it's necessary to put this contract in place because we're coming up on the two-year anniversary slash warranty of the facility. So, by not having this contract in place, we will incur additional costs if we have to have any work done on the control system. So we feel this is a critical component of the overall maintenance of the facility and we would request that the planned service contract for HVAC control for the Dover Library be awarded to sole vendor of Johnson Controls Incorporated for the three years described. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of council, Mr. Slaven, Mrs. Williams, and Mr. Persa.
Thank you, Mr. Persa. Mr. Koenig, was the library building commissioned? Was the HVAC system commissioned after it was installed?
Yes, there was a commissioning agent associated with the system and originally the system was operating within the parameters. We've had trouble as the controls have drifted and the software needs to be updated. So yes, it was, there was a commissioning agent for the building.
And the, the commissioning agent wasn't Johnson Controls, obviously, they installed the system, correct?
Yes, the system is, the, the result of the commissioning is, is that the system is designed and installed correctly, but it's not being maintained, so there's some difficulty getting to the accurate temperatures in the building. We had a problem over the winter, it has been monitored from a third-party offsite and they repeatedly said they've had difficulty with the control system, so this contract will address that software issue associated with the control.
So any thought going forward to getting it retro-commissioned after?
We have not discussed that, but the, the problems we're having were very specific and we think that this contract will, will address that. The building, we have a building dashboard to help us monitor the building, so I think going forward, if this, if there continues to be problems, we probably go that avenue. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams.
Mr. Koenig, how much does it cost to operate that building every year?
The total operating budget, including staff, is about 1.4 million. The staff component of it, if I remember correctly from the city-county meeting, is roughly 1.1 million dollars of that, so the $300,000 balance includes electricity, which is probably a little less than $100,000. There's a couple of contracts for security, private security in the building, there are some maintenance contracts associated with the building, but the total operating cost is about 1.4 million.
Was this, when the building was commissioned, was this approved as an operating cost?
I do not believe so. We, we knew that we would have an HVAC contract and we do have a contractor that does HVAC for, for various city buildings, but this contract is specific to the control feature of it, so the, the HVAC contractor that we have coming in to change filters and stuff like that does not, this is a proprietary program, basically.
Is there any plan for cost recovery on this, or is this 7,000 every year?
This will be a baseline $7,000 cost.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Persa, Mr. Lynn, and Mr. Anderson.
I don't think this, I had two basic questions, one of them I don't think's been asked before, but being it's a brand-new building that costs whatever it costs, are these systems that are now not working properly, are they under warranty? Why wouldn't the, the company that installed them just come back and fix them if they aren't working, they weren't working last year either?
Yeah, so the, the issue with this is, first, there's a software upgrade that has to happen, that's part of the initial cost that you see. There are some sensors that were working initially, but have now stopped working. So, the short answer to your question is, we're beyond the warranty period, so these things are no longer warranted, warranty, but we have to get within the operating parameters so that we don't do damage to the systems.
I, I, yeah, I understand the long-term application, keeping the system good where I just, question, initial question was, was there a warranty and have we able to check on it? Sounds like there is, but it expired after the warranty.
Initially, initially, part of the issue that we, initially, there was a number of discussions going back and forth between the architect and the HVAC design engineers because there was a concern that the system was designed incorrectly. In the end, everyone has determined that the system is correctly designed for the facility, but all of these control systems need to be operating efficiently for the building to run as designed.
Okay. Second question would be is, as we search for where to come up with the expenditures necessary to pay for this, my recollection is about six months ago, the city received a bequest from an estate that has, was tied to use on the library. I don't remember the specific amount of money, but I remember the city was, was in receipt of this money and we turned it over, I believe, to the Library Foundation or the friends of Dover Library.
There was a donation, yes, there were some donations.
Somebody passed away, left money to the city that we then gave to the, to the Foundation. Is, being that this is directly related to the upkeep of the building, the library, moving forward, is this the type of an expense that the Foundation would then use that money to apply? Being, this was the city's money that we gave to them, we now need $30,000, can we now say this is a, a fair use of those funds for the upkeep of the building?
I think it depends on your impression of how those funds came into the city, when there was funds bequeathed to the city of Dover specifically for the library.
My recollection is, I don't remember the name of the estate, I think Ms. Mitchell does, I remember it was a will and that's what it was. There wasn't a very specific bequest with it, but we received money for it, for use in the library, and I don't know, is that something we can examine whether or not that is a usable resource?
We can. Typically, what would happen in a library donation like that, most donations, I think, I could be wrong on this, but I would consider most donations to be capital donations unless they're specifically tagged for operating to the city. In this case, it's very early in the budget, we're talking about a $17,000 expense. On the good side, it's been a relatively cool summer, so our cost to air-condition the building is probably less than what we budgeted, so we may be able to pull some cost out of the operating budget to offset this. There is potential from what you just determined, additional funds related to the donation of the reciprocating borrowing agreement, so there's a lot of opportunities for us to contain this expense within the library budget rather than having to rob from other divisions. And I, my first expectation is we're going to try to contain this within the library budget over the balance of the year. We can go, the, the request for those funds, we would have to go to the foundation, the Library Foundation, to get those funds reverted back to us, which is an option if council would like us to do that.
I'm just asking questions as a point, I remember there was money that came in and the city in turn gave it to the foundation.
Yes.
It'd be nice in a circumstance like this for, I think it's beneficial to have the library taken care of, I think this needs to be done. Whether the warranty is expired and things like that, you figure that out later and you fix the problem, so I think the problem needs to be fixed.
Right.
It'd be nice to expand our-
We have to, we have to get this contract in place, we, I won't call it an emergency, but it is real close to being an emergency because-
Okay.
Otherwise, we're going to pay a premium to have them come out and look at stuff.
I'm not questioning the need, I'm just, I'm looking for different resources.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn, Mr. Anderson, then Mr. Slaven.
Mr. Persa read my mind on the warranty issue. My curiosity was piqued, however, when you made the statement that it was determined by the, by the architect and the contractor that the system was installed correctly. Who made that determination?
I would have to go back and look at the actual reports, but I believe that the commissioning agent, in the end, after everybody had evaluated the information, said that the system was correctly designed and was, was adequate for the building provided all of these things were working. So it's, it's kind of a layered approach, we need to get all these systems upgraded and in place to confirm that the original designs are working correctly.
Was the, and I have two questions. The first is, when was the commissioning, I'm sorry, strike that, the commissioning agent was not, and I think Mr. Slaven asked the same question, he was not the same person who installed it, correct?
No, there was a third-party commissioning agent that I believe the agreement was it worked for the architect, so it was a third-party commissioning agent.
Okay. And when did we, and here's, here's the real question, when did we discover the existence of the problem in relation to the expiration of the warranty? Was this something that we discovered last year and now sat on and now it's reached critical mass and the warranties have all expired? When did this first come to our attention that the system was not working correctly? Because if, if we knew over the winter that it wasn't working, why are we here at the end of summer now finally addressing it?
So the building went into operation September of '12, because this will be the two-year anniversary. The summer of '13, we were having difficulty in the heavy summer months because what, if I recall the problem correctly, it makes ice overnight and then it uses that ice and blows air across the ice during the daytime to cool the building. So, in the summer of '13, what was happening is the ice was melting before the end of the heating period during the day, or before the high temperatures of the day. They tried a number of different things to figure out what was going on. Kohler Ronin, which I think is the name of the design HVAC company, checked out a number of things that took us into the fall of last year, which would have been the fall of '13. As we came into the spring of '14 to confirm all of these, earlier this year, they were over there changing velocities, opening dampers to make sure that the air was flowing correctly through the building. They made a number of adjustments in the building in the springtime. And as we progressed through summer, the, the ultimate recommendation from Kohler Ronin, which- which is the designer, is that all of these control systems need to be up-to-date so that the system functions as designed. And I believe that the commissioning agent documents support that assertion. So the stuff that needs to be, needs to happen underneath this is not, there's not a defect that's covered under warranty. It is, this has to be operating so that they can firm everything is operating to the design standards.
With the exception of the sensors, which I would imagine are covered under warranty?
They may. I mean, I'll have to look and see what, I don't know the answer to your question, I guess, is the, for the sensor portion.
Mr. Anderson, then Mr. Slaven.
Thank you, Mr. President. Most of my questions have already been answered, so I'm not going to repeat those. I just have a curiosity, did we already, have we already budgeted for the recent generous transfer from the county? Is that already part of our budget?
The $40,000 from tonight, to my knowledge, that's not identified in any city budget at this point. I think the issue came up recently, and it wasn't until tonight that I knew what the number was.
Thank you.
Mr. Slaven, Mrs. and then Mrs. Williams.
I just wanted to clarify, I think, the point that Mr. Persa was making about that money that went back to the Library Foundation, I think it went into their endowment. So it's kind of locked up in their endowment at this point, so, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Mrs. Williams.
Mr. Koenig, you said that the commissioned third-party HVAC, was that, that was a subcontractor of EDIS?
I believe it was a subcontractor of the architect, which was Holsman Moss.
Well, my question is, are they, they're the people that, when the problem was identified, you said it was first identified in the summer of '13?
Yes.
Because it wasn't going through the full cycle, the ice cycle?
Right.
Are they the people who then began checking all the things, the dampers, the flow? Is it that company that was reprising you on what was happening?
There were multiple meetings with the entire, what I would call, the design-construction team. The project manager from EDIS, who was the onsite manager, worked with both the...
Let me tell you where I'm going with this. These people are the people that designed the system.
Correct.
These people were also the people that held up any determination about what to do until the warranty had expired.
Correct.
Same group.
So the only, the only portion of this, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, there's a portion of this that's related to a software upgrade.
I understand that, I understand that.
So, so then there's also a portion of sensor warranty.
But if I give you a service and I warranty it for two years, and then I come in a year, a year or six months after I put the system in, or give you the service, and then hold you off for 12 to 18 months to weeks before the warranty's expired, it would seem to me that that's kind of a, that's the company working at dual purposes. And it leaves the company in a position where it doesn't have to take, accept any responsibility.
In all of these issues, there is a lot of finger-pointing that happens, because nobody ultimately wants to take any responsibility for it. I think in this case, part of the complaint of the designer was, was that there was no control contract in place the day the building was open. So the designer is saying, we should have had this contract in place a year ago, and...
Yet the designer's also saying it took them a year to 18 months to tell you what the problem was.
Right.
But they didn't have a control system on day one.
We had a number of problems last year that were resolved when they came onsite and monitored the building while standing there.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. It just seems to me that the company that put the system in holds some responsibility in this because they held us up for a year. I mean, it, I'm surprised it took them 12 months to figure out it was something, a control.
Yeah, we were not happy with the initial response on this issue. Been going back and forth with them about response.
Now, we don't have any, we don't have any recourse under our, under the EDIS agreement?
I believe that EDIS has been completely paid out because we had to get all of the billing in to the state. Now, Mrs. Mitchell did the final project accounting for the project. Not sure if she sent it out to council yet, but it's done for project accounting, so...
So EDIS has, has held harmless?
Um...
They've been paid out?
Yeah, they've been paid out.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Slaven.
I appreciate the discussion about this. I'll move that we accept staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, and with the sponsor, with the motioner's agreement, I would ask that you amend that to include exploration as to whether or not $40,000 we got from the Kent County Levy Court tonight, we utilize to cover this, so we don't have to take it up the budget.
You just got the money like an hour ago, right?
That's all right. Easy come, easy go.
He's got the check, he's not going to...
You just, you just got the check.
Yeah, I'm amenable to that.
You're amenable to that? Second or amenable? Clear on the, no, you're all clear on the motion. The motion is to award planned service contractor the HVAC control systems for the Dover Library to sole vendor Johnson Controls for three-year amount of $32,763.50, with a proviso that we explore the possibility of utilizing the $40,000 that we got from Kent County Levy Court to cover the expense. Mr. Persa, question on the motion.
No, this is, I was trying to catch you before they made the motion. The question I had was to Mr. Koenig was regarding Johnson Controls. Were they the people who, the company that installed the system?
They installed the control system, yes.
So are they the only company eligible or capable of servicing this? Basically, if we want to fix this, do we have to use them? And are we setting ourselves up for, they find something else in two years, we need another $50,000 for whatever that is? Is it that, they have a monopoly on the servicing? I guess is where I'm going with it.
I would, in this case, say that Johnson Controls should be the sole source because it is proprietary.
Okay.
You can have somebody else come in and work on it, but if they...
More problems?
Yeah, if they create more problems than they solve, then we would be back to Johnson Controls to not just fix the problem, but fix somebody else's.
Okay. I mean, I agree the problem needs to be corrected. We can figure out who should have done what, when, I think at a later time, but it just seems a little murky to me. Okay, thank you.
I would remind council that proprietary systems, such as those furnished by Johnson Controls and some others, are just that, proprietary, and they get really upset when other people come in and fiddle with it.
Well, I guess where I'm going with this, is say, five years from now, we didn't forecast on the next version of whatever this proprietary system is going to cost us $100,000. Did we know that when we built the place?
That's the issue.
Yeah, what are we looking into?
Part of this contract requires them to give us the upgrades, so that's, if when you read through the fine print, it is so that you get the most recent updates of the software.
The new contract, you mean, or the old contract?
The proposal tonight includes all the updates.
So we won't have to do, and we didn't buy that the first time?
No, we did not.
Okay.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any other questions?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Persa?
With my reservations, yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Item 13, first reading proposed ordinance 2014-19, which has been referred to us by the Legislative Finance and Administration Committee. Final action by council will take place during the second reading of the ordinance on September 8, 2014. Copies of all proposed ordinances are available at the entrance to City Council chambers, or they can be obtained by the City Clerk's office. Mrs. Townsend, would you brief us?
Thank you. This ordinance would prohibit the sweeping, blowing, or otherwise discharging grass clippings into the street, sidewalk, gutters, storm drains, and such. This is something that is tied to our municipal separate storm sewer permit with DENREC, of which we are not in compliance. And in our most recent notice of violation, grass clippings in the street was identified as one of, one of the infractions. So in addition to helping our community look better, it would keep us in, or get us closer to compliance with our state permit and help improve water quality.
Thank you, Mrs. Townsend. Any questions, staff, Mrs. Williams?
Mrs. Townsend. You know, what about the act of God when the grass clippings are neatly on the owner's property and the wind breaks up and throws them on the street? What would DENREC say about that?
I think, I'm not quite sure, but I think that in terms of enforcement, we will be looking at egregious violations, not just where there's a few clippings here and there. There are times where you drive around and you can see a mat of grass where the owners have, or whoever's doing the lawn has blown it out into the street to get it off of their property. Really, that, that's where I think our enforcement would be on this.
My final question is, does DENREC have any concept that this is absolutely unenforced policy?
I am unsure.
I can tell you, Mrs. Williams, they probably don't care.
I kind of gathered that. I can only hope that, that all the grass cuttings in Dover, if a wind does come up, lands on the doorway of DENREC.
Careful, Mr. Small is a friend.
I'm inclined to vote in favor of this, but you have to promise me you won't ask for additional staff for grass clipping inspectors.
I can promise you.
And dispatch people during the summer to go out and check on this.
We're not going to plow grass, right?
Right, no.
You heard my previous comments during the committee.
Yes.
Overbeat them now, so thank you.
I understand.
Mr. Dixon, Mr. Anderson, then Mr. Persa.
I live on a dead-end street. The grass is being cut by a CVS store, they cut the portion of it and leave the rest high. So I go and cut it. And I blow it in the street with my lawnmower because there's nowhere else it's going to be blown. That's when the rain come along, wash it down, and all in the curvy, that's where it's going. Now, the other issue is...
You're in violation of DENREC, you know that.
Sorry about that. The other issue is that the fact that the city owned part of that stuff, so who going to find them? Huh?
We just got $40,000, so maybe... Sorry, that's all right.
We only have 7,000 left.
Wrong, which are already gone.
Somebody's going to take this check away from them.
We put it back on the tenants and the owners of homes, put their grass on their sidewalks, when it only come to the edge of the street. And you got grass growing along the edge of the street and across the street because it's coming up through the cracks of the, of the asphalt, and where is it going? Who going to cut it?
I think, Mr. Dixon, I think staff is particularly concerned about egregious violations. And I can, I can speak to one in my neighborhood in which I saw a pile of grass that was literally 18 inches high and 20 feet long, that sat there for probably 45 days before anybody picked it up. And that is the type of thing they're trying to preclude. Now, I will say that in, in deference to DENREC, they have a huge problem with grass clippings. They do pollute, they do cause problems. The state of Delaware has buildings, and I can speak to this from my own building, on State Street. Acorns aren't included in the grass clippings, yet I'm sure that they would more than plug up the drains and cause issues. They stain the sidewalks. So who pays for that? Me, when I cut the grass, or the state of Delaware because they're leasing the building, or the landlord? Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to get into the merits of this, this is the first reading, and I think it's already known what I think about it. The, I'm curious about, however, why a, why sidewalk is in this when, I mean, why would sidewalk be in this? Is it just thrown in there, or what?
Again, there's two pieces to this. One is the compliance with the state mandate, but the other is, is a community aesthetics issue. And again, when you have sidewalks that, again, we're talking egregious violations. There's always going to be a few clippings that end up on the sidewalks, but, but when you're talking about sidewalks that are caked with grass, they, they're no longer handicap-accessible, they're not attractive, they're not, it, they need to move the clippings off the sidewalk. It's the idea.
Thank you, Mrs. Townsend.
I just have one final question.
Mr. Persa was next.
Just a background question. What happens if we take no action at all on this, given kind of the tone of the discussion and kind of what's going on here? Are we in trouble with DENREC if we don't do something? Or is this, is this like...
We're in trouble with DENREC either way.
Well, first-passing legislation is never going to be enforced. Why are we bothering doing this? Is it, are we facing fines, or what is the government going to do to us if we don't do anything?
Well, they might lock me up, who knows? I think the answer is, you know, this is a, this is a housekeeping measure to put something on the books that will get rid of the most egregious violations of what's going on. This ordinance can be mailed to all the landscapers, so they just turn the blower to the, to the property side versus dumping it in the street. It's that simple. And we actually, you know, of the, you know, multiple pages of letters that we received from the state, this is one of the easy things to fix.
It's easy, it's easy, it's easy to pass, it's not complicated, I just kind of, we're not really focused on it, and I'm getting the impression that nobody wants to enforce it, why are we bothering?
We're not saying we don't want to enforce it, or I don't think we're saying we don't want to enforce it. We're not going to run out and enforce, you know, three blades of grass in front of somebody's house, but if, if they have an offense that's enforceable, and it's kind of one of those poke-in-the-eye issues, then yes, it will be enforced.
And then, I guess, the actual question was, what can DENREC do to us if we don't pass it? Does it do anything, or do we just fall back on the original legislation?
Well, the issue for us is, we're not in compliance with the permit itself, so those fines, you know, they probably start at $5,000 a day.
And does this solve that by bringing us in compliance with the permit?
It gives us one step closer to being, this does not bring us into compliance, but it's something we can point to that we're actually doing to improve our compliance.
Okay.
Mrs. Townsend, then Mrs. Williams.
I guess there are two, two points I want to make. One is that we are doing a number of things in, in multiple departments to bring us closer to compliance with the permits. One is how we track code enforcement violations. So we're doing a lot of housekeeping. As it relates to grass clippings, I don't think the issue, it, it seems silly on the surface, but I think we have all, you know, gone down the street where there's large mats of grass, just kind of out in the street. It gets brown, it looks unattractive. In addition, it's harming our water quality and putting us on DENREC's bad side. So I don't think, you know, I think it's, we can kind of laugh about, are we going to be the, the grass police and look for the clippings? Of course, we are the grass police, because if you're eight inches tall, we're going to find you on that. But I think what this does is, it gives us a tool when we see something that's egregious to go out and say, you know what? And typically, it's going to be handled through a letter.
Well, who's the letter go to? I guess...
It'll go to the property owner.
How do you know whose property is the one who threw the stuff in the street?
If it's, I mean, just like now, if it's in front, if you've got trash in front of your house and it's in the street, we're going to, we're going to cite you.
It's a winds of fate.
No, 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 no. I mean, say Saturday's lawn cutting day, and everyone in the street cuts their lawn, and, you know, it rained, and you have grass, which happens on my street, we have grass that clogs up these drains. I don't know where, whose property that grass came from. You got branches, you got all sorts of stuff, so I guess is, is the property owner who has the grate in front of their house going to be more responsible than the property owner who does not?
No. We're not going to track it at the grate, if it's out in the street laying dormant. If you just happen to have a storm drain in front of your house and that's where it ends up, we won't. Now, I will tell you that one of our inspectors did stop somebody when they were out driving around, who was literally out with his blower, blowing the clippings into the storm drain, because it would get it off of his property and off the street. He stopped him, and he, he used it as a, as an opportunity to talk about water quality... He stopped him, and he, he used it as a, as an opportunity to talk about water quality and how this affects water quality, and the guy was very nice to him.
So, teaching tool, rather than...
Exactly.
Mrs. Williams.
Two things, Mrs. Townsend. First thing, does Wilmington have to do this? Have they passed a grass, a grist?
I have no idea.
Find out, please.
I know that Newark has something.
I can't believe Wilmington does this.
I believe Newark...
I don't care about Newark.
Okay.
Wilmington.
Okay.
Okay, second thing, if by chance we should get fined significantly by DENREC, then I think that is the first government agency we ask for a payment in lieu of taxes, for whatever the fine is. We need to fight grass clippings with grass clippings.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. The obvious answer is to have a mounted patrol chief, so that the horses could go along and eat these grass clippings. Then we would run afoul of the Department of Agriculture's Nutrient Management Plan. So, you see, government has arms that go in several directions. This is only a proposed ordinance. Remember, it doesn't go until September 8. There are no other questions or proposed amendments to this. I'm going to defer to the city clerk for the introduction of the ordinance in accordance with section 1.9 of the Dover City Clerk. Madam Clerk?
Proposed ordinance number 2014-19, amending chapter 98, street, sidewalk, storm sewers, and other public places. Article 1 in general, section 98-5, duty of tenants or owners to maintain sidewalks and landscaped areas within the street right of way, and appendix F is applied.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We now have item 14 on the agenda, the first reading of the proposed ordinance 2014-18 and 2014-20, which amend appendix B zoning that recommended for referral to the planning commission on September 15, and that a public hearing be set for October 13, 2014, at 7:30, at which time the final readings and council action will take place. Copies of all proposed ordinance are available at the entrance of council chambers, and they can be obtained by the city clerk's office. I would request, Mrs. Townsend, to brief us on the proposed ordinance 2014-18, amending appendix B zoning, article 3, district regulations, section 24, planned neighborhood design option, and subsection 24 dash, um, 24.62 buffers. Article 4 zoning, bulk, and parking regulations, subsections 4.10 and 4.11. Return.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Hopefully, this is a little less controversial. What this would do is two things. First, it would eliminate the, the 40-foot perimeter buffer around projects that come through under the planned neighborhood design option. What that means is, right now, there are a number of subdivisions within the, the city that are required to have 40, a 40-foot buffer around the perimeter, within which no structure can be constructed. That includes a deck, that includes a shed, it includes a number of other things that we've had, it actually includes a fence, a number of things that we have had to deny that typically would be normal improvements to a lot. So, I think when the PND went into effect, there was more concern about, was this going to blend in with the community? I think what we're seeing now is that the PND's blended fine with the communities. So, so one, it would remove that 40-foot buffer around the perimeter, and two, it would reduce the front and rear setbacks by 10 feet each to allow flexibility in lot layout and design.
Thank you. Any questions, Mrs. Townsend? Seeing none, I'm sorry, Sean, go ahead.
With the setback changes, does that, does that affect density? Are we going to be able to put more housing on there?
It does not affect density.
Thank you.
Any further questions of staff? If there are no questions on a proposed, or amendments, I will entertain a motion for the referral to the planning commission as a reprimand.
So what?
Second, Mr. Slavin makes the motion. Mr. Dixon is the second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. I'd now request, Mrs. Townsend, to brief us on the proposed ordinance 2014-20, amending appendix B zoning, article 10, planning commission, section 2, site development plan approval.
Okay, this one, again, is, is kind of a small amendment. It was something that was intended to be included in what city council passed on July 14, when we did the rewrite of the commercial and office zones, that also had some changes to the administrative procedures. There was language in that section in article 10 that changed it so that you could have a 15% expansion of building floor area without going to the planning commission. So, it would be administrative if it was less than 15%. What we didn't do is mirror that language in impervious cover. So, the effect of that was the first project that we were expecting to review under that did not meet it because it increased impervious cover by more than 15%. If you recall, when, when this went through, part of the, the, the hope was that this would make some of the modest expansions to our large industrial facilities easier in terms of process. It doesn't get them out of code requirements, it gets them out of planning commission. Again, we immediately determined that it did, we missed the impervious cover language that, that mirrors the building expansion language. So, what you have in this ordinance is a repeat of that language, only as it relates to impervious cover.
Thank you, Mrs. Townsend. Any questions of staff? Seeing none, if there are no further questions or proposed amendments, I'll entertain a motion for its referral as recommended.
Should move.
Motion by Mr. Hutchison, second, by Mr. Dixon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries unanimously. Item number 15 is council members' announcements. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. By Mr. Slavin, we are adjourned.
Better watch out, he's coming for you.
So what?
He's coming for you because you put your clap on grass flipping.
No problem. How are you?